Enter into a closed meeting. Do we have a... What do you call them things?
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. It resolved that Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, Parks and Recreation Commission. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Fiskowski?
Aye.
You're now in closed session. We'll go ahead and... Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
I have.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Chair Fiskowski?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Next, we have certification of closed meeting. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion con vying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Zero motion.
I have.
Second. Motion and a second, call a roll.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bladens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Fiskowski?
Aye.
Six ahs.
All right, it's our county administrator will go ahead and lead us in our invocation and pledge.
If we could, if we can stand for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item is public hearings. Rezoning Oak Forest Mobile Home Park LLC.
I believe Planted Director Gibson's going to walk us through that this evening.
Tonight, we are going to walk through the application by Oak Forest MHC LLC with Agent Gay and Neal for a rezoning request of 6.79 acres to Planted Mobile Home Residential to add 20 units and then an SGP which would amend their existing master plan on the site. It's located off of High Top Road and that is in the Prices Fork Magisterial District. And you can see the little red dot right there. If you're looking at the existing property, you can see these are the property lines of the existing park and you can see sort of the outline of the homes there. And the subject parcel is this one here, the 004860, to be added. So it was originally rezoned in 1984 and at that time it also obtained the SGP for the master plan. It's been amended five times, most recently in 2010. It has a maximum number of units. And then they installed several of the amenities that were required based on those changes. The addressing has been updated and for those of you who have been around, that used to be an issue in our manufactured home parks where they would have lot numbers but not necessarily 911 addresses and this one is fully compliant with 911 addresses and the internal streets are named. There is one existing dwelling on the property, subject property. It's hard to see if it's sort of in this lower corner here and the proposal is to subdivide that off on its own acre and it would remain. So if you're looking at the overall master plan update, you can clearly see both the house locations as well as this additional parcel and then basically you can see where that house would remain on its own lot down in the corner there. This is the entrance here at the bottom off of High Top Road into the project. Here you can see the bus stop with the parking area and kind of get a sense of the road network. This is one of the recreation areas there, another recreation area here. This is a close up of the recently acquired parcel. It shows a cul-de-sac street with the additional units and how that would be aligned. This gives you a sense of the topography of the site and it also shows you there's 100 feet power line easement that runs sort of diagonal through the end there. When we took a look at the impacts of 20 additional units, that comes out to about 2.95 units per acre and then brings the overall park to 234. This private street will be constructed to access the expansion area. They're going to use the main entrance and BDOT has confirmed that entrance has been an acceptable entrance with no upgrades required. And they did not, based on the new traffic numbers, they did not feel it had a negative impact on the existing travel patterns involving the area. The park is also now on water and sewer. That was done in one of the updates over the years. And the PSA, they will, there's different approaches of how it will connect, but they will work with them to find the best way and also make sure that they're connecting in a way that is as functional as possible and avoids the stormwater management areas because they're in some proximity to one another. Based on previous information we've received from the schools, it's estimated this project may add up to 12 students using the system that they normally use, but we did not receive any comments from Montgomery County Public Schools after sending them the project. It does not lie in a flood zone and of course it will have to fully meet ENS and stormwater or other environmental requirements. Emergency services evaluated, the hydrant, actually Mike O'Garry worked with Blacksburg to find the best location for the truck and it will be served by Blacksburg Fire Rescue. So this gives you a sense of what the comprehensive plan calls for. This area is in what we call urban expansion. And from a planning and land use perspective, urban expansion is basically areas that are just outside the towns and that we identify as being areas for expansion in our residential areas. As we mentioned, it's also served by public water and sewer, has an adequate entrance. It's going to maintain three and a half acres of open space around the addition. It connects to the park. There are paths and sidewalks inside the park. How they will connect to this section is undetermined because there is some topography issues. This area is below that existing area. And there are some buffers that are required based on site plan and we're going to talk about the commission's condition number six, which was to enhance the evergreen screening. From a housing perspective, manufactured housing is an affordable housing type and manufactured housing parks are identified in the comp plan to be developed and maintained in a livable form. This isn't new, but it does expand an existing park that has met some of those goals that we've talked about with open space recreation, 911 addressing and amenities. So it is consistent with the comp plan and did qualify for consideration of the rezoning. When we go further into the analysis, as I brought up before, it's about 2.9 units per acre. It is in an area preferred for higher density. The existing house is going to remain and will fully need zoning. There are existing open spacing recreation areas, the bus shelter is easy to share as well as the two recreation areas. The three and a half acres on this addition will mostly be passive recreation and that's because with that power line easement plus the creation of the one acre lot, there's going to be a limitation on structures that can go with the power line easement, but certainly things that are temporarily livable could be an option for them. It is accessed via a private street, so BDOT did just analyze the entrance, but based on the addition of only the 20 units, the impact of the entrance would be minimal. It will have an additional fire hydrant and the park is currently partially wooded and it in itself, because of the topography and the space, is already buffered from the adjoining properties. We had it said that a type three buffer would have been required on the yards that were remaining, that were added to the park. The applicant indicated in their narrative from the application that they would try to preserve what they could for existing vegetation because that one side is evidently When staff also looked at the analysis, we took a look at those existing conditions of the SGP and several of them it didn't make sense to carry forward because they had already been accomplished. So the development plans previously were already done and we don't have a new condition saying that they will be approved and then we'll issue permits because that's our process and everyone has to follow it, so it doesn't need to be a special condition. Four and five were related to the bus shelter and it is constructed and did conform. The drainage improvements and easements were a project that's been completed and restoration of existing detention pond was also a project that's been completed. We did make some modifications to the specialty use permit language to clarify maintenance requirements and to update the reference for this newest master plan. The Planning Commission held their hearing at last Wednesday. They recommended approval of the rezoning by a seven to one with one accent. And then they also recommend approval of the special use permit with the conditions outlining the new date for the special use permit, kind of showing that that old one is being replaced, that the amenities will be maintained and those amenities include the recreation areas and parking areas, that the streets also are maintained by the park owner, that development plans will include the specific hydrant locations that we've discussed. Fire protection has to be installed at a certain level and so these are all, all the price and location specifics are borne by the owner. And item number six is the one that the commission added at their public hearing last week. That evergreen trees shall be installed along any unwooded portion of the southern boundary and they shall be a minimum of six feet high. Planting and placement shall be designed to maximize the screening of those adjacent properties. And that vote was also seven to one with one accent. So that's all I have for you. I can take any questions. And also, Mr. Altizer with Gay and Neal is here and has a few items to go with you on behalf of the applicant.
Does anybody have any questions?
I got one.
Okay.
On the letter you sent us, it says, "There are concerns expressed regarding the road network for emergency service responders. However, it is recognized that due to traffic, it cannot be accommodated." What's that mean?
So if we go back to the aerial, it's a little easier to see. We had, one of our planning commissioners is a volunteer rescue, rescue volunteer and was familiar with the fact that they have several calls to this site and that because of the current road networks, they sort of end and they have to often back up emergency vehicles. So we had a conversation about how the existing road network sort of isn't ideal. And then with the new parcel being added, there was a question of could this street connect somewhere to the other, to the existing street network, just to build in more of a functional street network instead of the dead ends that exist there now. And that's why the letter says they did look at it, but topographically you can't have more than about a 17% grade on the street to make sure it's a functional street that any vehicle could travel up and down and without substantial site work. That cannot be accomplished here. Plus the location of the power line easement too at the other side.
Just my concern, you know how fast these things can burn?
We do recognize that there have been challenges there before. We also recognize that this addition with the cul-de-sac street meeting the radius requirements and having its hydrant, this addition in and of itself would be something consistent with what the Board would see now versus what was created starting with the 1984 rezoning.
Yeah, I understand the hydrants, but I've seen several of these, I mean, matter of minutes. I'm just not comfortable with not having road to all of them.
Well, there is a road that goes to all the units. It's just that when they, he brought up the rescue calls, that when they go and serve a unit, that they often don't have clearance to turn around, they have to back up. So he didn't speak specifically to fire, which they would have to do the same thing, but the roads are there for access. I think it's the maneuvering the vehicles that he was most concerned about.
I just, I just think they can look in there and find some way so the emergency vehicles wouldn't have to back up. I mean, just like having a stroke, I mean, you got the Golden Hour, you're trying to back up and you got POVs and everything else there.
Right. And so that's one of the reasons that the addition has what we would consider kind of a standard subdivision street where it has the 24 width for two lane vehicles and also has the turnaround radius cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Bladens, do you have any questions?
Well, and for the comments in here, we only had one person that spoke at the public meeting that had something against it or concerned about it.
Yes, the gentleman that came to the Planning Commission public hearing was also the gentleman
that sent the email. That's correct.
I am also concerned about access to our first responders. Is there any way that that road could be made bigger?
Do you mean wider?
Wider, yeah.
They probably have some flexibility for the width of the road because you can see around the actual lots they're showing that they have this area, which they had talked about pushing the lots about pushing the lots up a little bit when they did the development, to also get, create more buffer between the surrounding residential lots. But they do have that area to the north and to the south, so they would have some additional width available to them, sure.
And the access to the open area there, is that maybe an option to do something to give us more space, or, you know, I'm thinking of a fire truck or ambulance, or if you've got something, you've got ambulance and fire and police there, and then everybody's got to try to back up, you know?
So on this street, you do have a radius that would accompany, that would accommodate a vehicle turning, and that radius is usually minimized based on a large truck being able to turn around there. So I don't know the size of the radius, I don't know that they designed it, so it's something that could still be discussed to make sure it has a minimum size for turning the vehicles. A 24-foot width of the pavement is our minimum for two vehicles passing one another, is 24 feet.
And the builder is going to be responsible for that private road?
Yes, for the main, for the building and the maintenance of it. That's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd. So what I'm viewing as a manufactured unit, are they going to be the, is it the standard, like what's there already, or is it going to be like the two-part, wider?
So I, I think these are designed, and the applicant's agent may be able to speak to that better, but this park has a combination of the single wide units and the double wide units.
Okay.
These are shown as individual lots here, and I don't know that they specified it at this point, but Bryant might be able to answer.
So are they going to be rental units, or they?
He does rent, yes.
Okay.
But he has a combination of the sites where people can bring their own, or ones that he rents. That was a question that came up during the Planning Commission site visit.
Okay.
So he has a combination.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Biggs, do you have any questions?
I don't really have a question, but if we're concerned about the vehicles and the road being wide enough, I mean, is that something we should, you know, bring up now to?
Emily, most of our secondary roads in the county are only 20 feet wide, so this is four feet wider than the majority of our secondary roads.
We, secondary roads out, or even 18 feet with a crown in the middle. So this is, this is a, what we would call a standard treveling. Some of our subdivisions do have from face of curve to face of curve, 36 feet of pavement, but that's to accommodate on-street parking. So if we wanted to, if you had a concern to oversize the width, and you wanted to say maybe figure out, maybe have no less than a width of 28 to 30 or something like that, that's certainly something that you all can consider as part of the special use permit process, if you have concerns about either the radius size or the road width.
Vice Chair, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So would any fire and rescue law enforcement have any trouble getting in on that street and turning around in the circle? The biggest fire truck, the biggest whatever we've got in the county, would they have difficulty going around that circle?
I cannot answer that. I don't know. Right now, it's a, it's a bulb on paper. There's a minimum radius that is required to accommodate the larger fire trucks, and when the applicant agent comes forward, he may be able to tell you if this is, this is only a concept plan and it hasn't been engineered yet. So it has the capability to, but they have not indicated what a minimum size would be.
And none of our rules and regulations for engineering firms tell them a minimum size that it can be?
Our private street requirements do have a minimum size, and it's based on VDOT standards.
And is that supposed to accommodate all our biggest trucks that we have?
I believe so.
So in fact, none of our trucks should have any difficulty getting in or out if we've done our work properly?
They should not have any trouble getting in based on the entrance, the grade of the road, and there being a turnaround bolt. But as to the minute, as to the size, and if it could accommodate the largest truck we have, I don't think we've done that analysis. But Bryant may be able to speak more to that.
So I think, you know, at least in the Planning Commission, one of the commissioners was saying all of those dead-end streets were a real issue, and that's what the whole backing up was the issue. Given what's in front of us, which is that one corner, can we put SUPs in for, or whatever, for the rest of the, make sure that there are bulbs on all those dead ends? Is that possible for us to do now for the rest of the park?
We are amending the SUP for the entire site, but the analysis and the request was only for this addition that's outlined in the red. If that was something you wanted to do, I would recommend that we talk to Marty about it before a next meeting and a vote being taken.
Marty, what do you, is that possible, or is that?
We'd have to look at it, yeah. We really can't make discussion on that right now.
And then lastly, the pine trees. Can you show that aerial view so that we understand the, where the dense trees are? And I don't know if you can zoom in, or?
Probably the best here. I'll do.
Yeah, great. No, that's far enough, right there. So the dense trees are in that first third, let's say, and then there's nothing along that south end, south side.
There's just some scattered, you can see here, a little bit of shadowing, those are bushes, but very sparse.
And so in the SUP for this, for that part of the property, that south line, that two-thirds of it, is there any pine stuff in our community that any of us would be aware of, that would represent the shielding, that the pine that we're requiring for this is like?
So we don't have a specific, we asked that it be evergreen, that it have a minimum height of six feet at planting, and that it be designed to provide maximum screening. So that could be something that shrubs or hedges. It could be sort of arborvitae type of thing, that is kind of large, but can be closer than others. So it's screening that is evergreen all year and maximizes screening, and we sort of left some discretion there. So we don't specify the species of the tree.
So I've seen pine trees that I can see my neighbor through, and I've seen pine trees that I can't see my neighbor through. Is that up to?
Well, we, a standard pine, something like a loblolly or something like that, would not be for maximizing screening, because they grow tall and then only have the trunks. So we would be looking at something like a leland cyprus, arborvitae, something that was bushy and provided that screening at the ground level, not just the trunk. So it has to be, it has to be evergreen, and it also has to maximize screening, so that's why it has sort of multiple layers.
And it's, it's required to have multiple different types of evergreens so that they all help each other maximize screening?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Emily, the only question I have is, will there be driveways for each one of these units? Or will there be, will there be parking on the street?
No, there will be driveways for each of the units. That is standard.
Okay, all right. And the one vote against it, did that have to do with the dead ends?
It was the same commissioner that brought it up. He brought up a couple of different issues. His concern with potentially the housing goals of the comp plan being somewhat dated, he brought up, citing that we had recently approved projects along Chris's Fork that were a different type of housing and a different type of quality, and he felt like that was sort of the direction, that even though we haven't updated the comprehensive plan via adoption, we've gotten some feedback from the public on. But our village areas are very different than our urban expansion and residential transition areas of the county, and so while that, that was expressed, as well as his concern about the road network, those were the two items that he brought up.
Okay. The, what Sarah had brought up about fixing the other dead ends, is that something that has ever happened before, when, when a new SUP is put in place, that they go back into other areas and have to change them?
That was sort of specifically what I identified, that because staff hadn't provided any sort of analysis or work with the applicant on it, because we did focus on the additional portion being added to the existing master plan. If that was something that the board was interested in, we would need to take a look at what our options were. I couldn't, like Marty said, we can't really discuss it on the fly right now. We would have to kind of dig a little bit deeper into what they're already vested in, as well as by opening it up, what latitude would the board have prior to your vote?
Okay. Did that bring up any other questions for anybody? Okay, you said the agent is here also?
That is correct, and I just put his slides here on the end. Bring this up, and let Bryant.
My name is Bryant Altizer, representing Gay and Neil. We're the agent for Oak Forest Mobile Home Park. I was actually, I had a little blurb with some bullet points that I was going to try to hit on, but I think Emily hit every one of them. So I was just, there was one other one that I was going to bring out. One of the most recent additions did provide, I think it's 14 double wides there, and that brought about a little more diversity within the park. And then I've got, I'd like to take your, bring your attention to this. This is from the, we were the Valley Regional Commission for Mobile Homes in the NRV, and when it talks about manufactured homes, I think it's really important to, to remember that this area is not always good at providing affordable housing. And I know that that's relative to income, but if you look at the blurb that we took from the report that was online, it's pretty amazing when you look at the second page, I think that you have, the last statement. It says at least 5,500 are needed to, and this is affordable homes, at least 5,500 are needed to relieve and stabilize the members of our community that have been unable to access housing without sacrificing their basic well-being. And there's a lot of other information in there that you can read that talks about that. So this central location between Blacksburg and Christiansburg provides a perfect spot for affordable housing. And it's not like this is a new development. This is a, an existing mobile home park that has been in place for over 30 years. It's been successful. I know that there's problems, like turnarounds and things like that, but there's, it's not limited to just this mobile home park or this development within the, within the county. I've made a couple notes as we were discussing stuff. The street width does exceed most every single subdivision street in the entire county. 24 feet width is not even in VDOT's subdivision street requirements until you get over, I think, four, I can't remember the number, but it's a much larger number than 20 lots. So in fact, I think we just submitted a, a set of plans for Walnut Creek Expansion. That has 20, 20-some lots, and this VDOT street width on that one is 18 feet. The cul-de-sac is a very standard number that is required by VDOT for turnaround of all vehicles. Now, if you have an oversized fire truck, for example, that may not be just a quick turnaround, they may have to do some maneuvering, but this cul-de-sac radius does meet VDOT standards. So, and this is a private street also, but, let's see, I'm going to touch on a couple other things. The screening, most of the time, I know that the pines that you're talking about are probably white pines. We'd never want those because they don't have a lifespan, usually of about 20 years. Typically, one of the trees that you would want to have is a Norway spruce. It's really thick, slow-growing, and when you stagger rows, you can provide maximum screening like that. So that's the kind of thing that we would, that we would end up specifying on them. And then driveways, we do have a, we will have a prototypical layout for each one to have a driveway, but we do have a note on the, note seven, on the, the open space concept that says that the new units may either be single wide or double wide based on site conditions of each individual lot. So some of the lots are a little steeper, some of them are not, and so the ones that are well-suited for double wides, that's the one that, that would be most likely to have that. I'm sure we're doing an all-over-the-approach here, since Emily covered most of my material here, so go ahead. I guess I did want to point out too, that we, the location of this is right next to the existing mobile home park, with 57 acres of existing mobile home park, and being able to expand in an area that is adjacent, that already has all of the, the transportation needed, the recreation needed, water and sewer hookups, and then we will also be providing stormwater management for this phase. And I would welcome any other questions that I hopefully can answer. It's, it was, been about five months since we prepared this plan, so I was quickly going over some of the numbers, because some of these have lost my, been out of my memory for five, five months, so I welcome any questions.
Supervisor Biggs, do you have any questions for Mr. Altizer?
Are you going to have like, any kind of recreational facilities for the kids?
There are existing recreation areas already in the park. The open space at the end of this phase will be open. I don't think we've ended up with a, a specified recreation component in that open space. I'm going to read my notes here real quick, just to make sure too.
It just looked like a nice space, so I didn't know.
It's passive recreation.
Right. So you could play kickball there?
Yeah, I do some.
Little roll down hill.
I guess you could stand downhill and kick up.
Good exercise. Do you have any other questions? Supervisor Shepherd? I don't have any questions. Thanks. Supervisor King? Supervisor Blevins?
Again, as the, as the builder, would you all be able to consider, even though I know it already exceeds, the 24 width already exceeds, and the cul-de-sac meets VDOTs, seems that we have this reoccurring problem in these dead-end subdivisions of that. When we do have an emergency arises, and this is not the first time, last year I heard several times that same problem come up about first responders getting able, is it big enough for a fire truck to turn around, that type of thing? So is there a way that we could expand that, if it's not going to be easy to access or connect other roads, so you have an access? That is, that is a concern, that, you know, we have responsibility to make sure that we can protect and serve, and, and if these, like, just like Supervisor King said, these places are this close together, if you can't get the fire truck or the equipment there, that becomes a concern. And so if we do it, we might do it right. And we're going to make sure, is that something that the builder, that we could go in and discuss? And maybe that's something legally we would need to look at for further development to make sure that our trucks are able to turn around, that type of thing.
Yeah, I can't speak to the existing part, but the new part that we're proposing exceeds... Yeah, I can't speak to the existing part, but the new part that we're proposing exceeds pretty much all subdivision requirements in the county. You can look at Cobain Bridge, those streets are either 18 or 20 feet with the same size cul-de-sac Preston Forest. You can look at all of those streets, and those are gonna be the same or less than this one. It it only gets, needs to get wider when you have on-street parking. And since, you know, it's, we're gonna have individual driveways with no on-street parking, 24 feet actually should be, it's actually a little excessive for for this size development.
Well, I do appreciate and support that we do need affordable housing in between Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and the expansion of the already existing parks. I don't, I don't have a, a problem with, you know, supporting the development. I just want to make sure that we've done it right, that we don't have future problems and that be my concern. But obviously, it's all, it sounds like we exceeded what is required.
Thanks. You're welcome. Vice Chair?
So I'm glad that you use Preston Forest. Those roads are how wide?
It depends, it depends on how much traffic is on it, but it usually-
Like the initial roads that you go into the subdivision?
Probably 20 feet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I did.
They're, they're pretty wide. They're pretty wide. Can you give the diameter of that cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it's, I think it's on the, the plan that has topography on it, and I think it was 40 feet, 40-foot radius.
So how big is a, the biggest fire truck out there in the county? Do you know?
You got different sizes.
What's the biggest one?
I think Blacksburg's got, Blacksburg's probably bigger than ours.
Yeah, I know that the ladder truck in Blacksburg is bigger, but I don't know that that would be the appropriate vehicle coming to this location.
I don't think so. It just, it just depends on if you get one case on fire, a lot of times it'll jump to the next one.
Right.
But you're saying, he's saying a ladder truck probably wouldn't be necessary.
All right.
I guess.
I can say what they run.
So is the ladder truck the bigger truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, they used it pretty long.
And the only reason why you would use a ladder truck is if you had multiple stories?
Yeah.
Okay, so how big is the next biggest truck that isn't a ladder truck that could be called to this, you know?
Well, as far as the road goes, I mean, you'd be-
No, I'm talking about the cul-de-sac. We need it to turn around.
What size is your cul-de-sac? Is it?
He said 40 feet.
40-foot radius, so it's an 80-foot diameter.
Oh, so that's really big, actually. Yeah, no truck is gonna have any trouble turning around the cul-de-sac.
The standards back when Preston Forest was developed-
I'm sorry, I thought it was 40 feet diameter. I apologize, so.
I think most of the cul-de-sacs early on, when VDOT had a smaller standard, they were 30-foot radius on a lot of the older subdivisions. And that, that change probably happened yesterday, 20 years ago.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. And did you say that the, did you say how wide the other streets are in that park? How wide they are?
My guess is high-top coming to this is probably only 22.
No, inside the park?
Yeah.
The ones that are causing all the questions about getting jammed up?
A muddy drive coming up to this is probably 24 feet wide. I'm not sure the width on the ones inside the park, and most of them are probably gonna be 20 feet or less.
Okay, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Any follow-up questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We had nobody sign up for the rezoning of Oak Forest or anyone sign up for the special use permit for Oak Forest. But is there anybody here that wants to speak on these issues? You can come forward, give us your name, your address, and you have four minutes. And which one are you speaking on?
But the rezoning.
Rezoning, okay.
Hi, my name is Gary Walker. My wife and I own the property of 1074, which is the property adjacent to the proposed rezoning. I already wrote in a letter of opposition, so I'm not gonna reiterate any of the negative impacts. I feel I just wanted to kind of state my opinion on the fact that I think it's extremely unfair to, to myself and to my neighbors. When we originally purchased the property back in '09, the main reason we bought the property was the nature of the property itself, the views, the agricultural land surrounding it, the horses next door. We also wanted to raise horses eventually on the property. It's currently completely buffered. You cannot see the park, you can't hear anything, by woods on the, on the far side and by really dense woods on the other side. By placing 23 additional units right behind the property, it's gonna change the very nature of all the surrounding properties. We've invested a good deal of money in the property over the years. I'm positive this is gonna reduce everybody's property values, change the nature of the area. I wasn't even aware that a company was able to do that, come in and take something from a single-resident property to, I'm not sure, 23 units, 24 with the house. But that's, that's my, my problem. But the visibility aspect and the blocking, I know that was addressed, but that, the easement, if you wanna pull the handouts that I gave you, kind of put it in perspective, I've got three. I've got the, the project and then an aerial view to show you where my house is, and then the existing buffer, the wooded area and front and back. I took a picture also from, from my house to the fence line on the, on the picture. That fence line would be the south property boundary. And then that easement, that 100 feet is directly behind my house and goes and is angled. So any, even the, you know, the requirements you put for a boundary, they're not gonna be able to build them 100-foot easement power line. So that's gonna, yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're not gonna be able to plant evergreen trees underneath that huge power line. So that's gonna all be open, invisible from my property. Then, yeah, it's just, if you can, if you look to, you can't see the, you can't from any of the other properties. It is, this wooded area completely isolates the park from our properties. The biggest thing in an overall, you know, it's gonna change the, the nature, the views, the privacy, the safety of all three of our properties and surrounding areas. And I just wanted you to consider our rights, you know, we, I wouldn't purchase the property if that was there initially or if I knew there was a possibility of that being there. And then, you know, so just kind of put it in my perspective, think about someone doing this in your backyard, you know, whether that's right or not. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Emily Gibson?
I do not want to speak unless you have a question for me.
Do not. Any other questions for Emily? Okay, go ahead.
So we know the comprehensive plan and that there's urban expansion, and so that's why it's very natural for us to possibly rezone this area because it's in the urban expansion area. But if someone bought a parcel nearby, you know, 30 years ago, we would not have had that urban expansion in place at that time. So they would never have known that that was a possibility. Is that, is that true or how does that work?
Well, urban expansion is a designation in the comprehensive plan, and whenever the comprehensive plan is adopted or updated, it's a pretty public process. It was last updated and adopted in 2005. So at least since that time, this has been designated for urban expansion, which is higher density whenever water and sewer is available and is in our areas usually closest to the towns, which this is. You'll notice that not only is this urban expansion, but you can see, you can see here that it's next to our U D A, which is a high-earther area, and then our residential transition, which also talks about higher-density residential. So it is in an area that the county has identified for growth and higher density. Someone may not have been here when the comprehensive plan was adopted, if that's what you're speaking to, but certainly it's a document that guides growth in the county and is readily available if someone is interested in looking for it when they're purchasing other properties or things like that.
And then prior to 2005, how-
There was a comprehensive plan in place. This one replaced it. So there has been-
Was it from the 90s or 80s?
Probably the 90s. I think we only had two before the 2005 ones, so.
And the comprehensive plan is approved by the board of supervisors, so the public knows if they wanna see it, you know?
There are at least the two minimum required hearings, but there's usually a series of public outreach.
You've got, yeah, a whole bunch of process, sort of like our village plan.
Yep, just like that.
Great, thank you.
All right, no other questions for Emily? Thank you. All right, we have no other people going to speak at this hearing, so the hearing is now closed. Move on to the next item is public address. We have a sign-up sheet for public address, and we only had one person sign up. Nasif Gwari. Is there anyone else, anybody else that would wanna come up and speak at public address? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close public address. Moving on to addendum.
No addendum this evening, Mr. Chair.
We have no addendum. Items of consent.
I'm gonna make a motion to put the items of consent on the floor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary Caldwell?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spine?
Aye.
Chair Zajkowski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, before we go into work session, I've been requested for a 10-minute break, and we are going to go ahead and do that. So the clock, I'll look at this clock, says 8:04, so we will come back at 8:14. Okay, meeting's back in order. Our next item is work session.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, you gotta have a motion to go into work session.
Motion, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah.
I just started talking.
We have a motion and a second. Did you hear that?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Who made the motion?
Mr. King.
King.
So if you'll call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blavatsky?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spine?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair for the Council?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Sometimes I get a little carried away with these quick meetings.
I was starting to talk before you went to work session, I'm sorry. Well, good evening, Board members. I did wanna share with you this evening, as you're probably aware, uh, we've had a discussion of a proposed caregiver leave policy for several months. We actually discussed this maybe as early as last fall. I know we've had several discussions about, uh, amending the current county paid parental leave policy to a policy that would also take into account, uh, parents, grandparents, other, other family members other than just children. Um, and so after some discussion, we've, we've titled it proposed caregiver leave policy because it would be an all-inclusive type policy. And Clay McCoy, our HR director, is here with us this evening. Clay's gonna give you just a brief overview of, of where we are in that process, what we've put together so far, and then, um, have a few comments, and I'll wrap up about next steps because I know this is something that has been of interest for a while and we just need to get it back in front of you to move it forward. So Clay?
Clay, it's always good to see you working a little overtime.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you all hosting me tonight. Good to see everybody. Um, so thank you, Craig. Um, and as Craig mentioned, we do have, and we have for a number of years, at a paid parental leave policy in place, um, a generous benefit for those who utilize it, uh, they're very thankful for it. And, uh, it, it applies to folks who have given birth to a child, uh, spouse of a woman who has given birth to a child, um, adopted or fostering a child. Um, so great in theory, um, excellent benefit for folks, but then one of the unintended consequences that we have had over the years is folks have not felt that that was equitable, particularly those outside of the childbearing years. Um, they're looking at, uh, as they're the sandwich generation, sometimes have parents at home of a certain age that require care, or older children, um, that it's not just a newborn, but they have a serious medical condition. So there's not really a policy or mechanism in place for that. So, um, some of the things that we've looked at doing is trying to expand our current policy to a paid caregiver leave, uh, policy, um, to include fostering or acting in loco parentis because sometimes you have folks who are acting as legal guardians, which is not part of our current plan, but also for the serious health condition of a spouse, son or daughter, or parent in keeping with family and medical leave act. We've just lifted that straight out of the Act. So, um, those are some of the, uh, primary aspects. Um, one other thing is we frequently run into issues, um, the current paid parental leave act, uh, or policy says that at the, uh, it ends with 160 hours, but if the employee returns to work prior to the expiration of that amount of time, that the paid parental leave act, uh, or leave policy ceases. What happens though sometimes is particularly at the sheriff's office, if someone has to come back in because they've got court that was scheduled months and months in advance, then is that fair to nullify the remainder of their leave if they're having to come back to work? They're not opting necessarily to, but they're obligated as part of their job. So that's one of the things that we've also wanted to put in there too, that if you are required to return for a legitimate, legitimate work purpose, that we're not going to penalize you, that you could then, um, with documentation, utilize the remainder of your leave. So those are just some of the key aspects of it that we're looking at. Do you all have any questions up here?
Supervisor Blavatsky?
Uh, I think this is a great idea. That way it's, uh, and so it's 160 hours. And so that, and I do believe we should put in the stipulation that if somebody has to come back because they're required to come to court, um, that that would not penalize them, um, their time. No questions, thank you.
Supervisor King?
Yeah, I didn't hear you mention grandma and grandpa.
Unfortunately grandma and grandpa aren't covered under Family and Medical Leave Act.
Well, we.
And, and, and you're absolutely right. We can craft this and be more generous than what FMLA requires. Um, yeah, I know that that's certainly a reality for some of us.
Well, when Supervisor Gabriel got the parent leave through, this is one thing that I pushed for. We need grandma and pop-pop in there.
Okay. You'll get no argument there, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Shepard?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, and maybe a discussion more than a question, but so, and a question too. So let's say I take off with my mother who's, doesn't drive anymore and she has to have surgery in Ranoke and I have to stay with her for three days. Now I'm out for three days. So if I come back after that three days, the 160 hours is gone?
This would be more for, what you're talking about is more of an FMLA occurrence where you would take that, and FMLA you can use intermittently. Um, this is for a serious medical condition where it requires like a hospitalization or a longer term in nature.
Okay.
Uh, a hospital admission type situation.
All right, that's all.
Supervisor Biggs?
Help me remember, are sisters and brothers covered? Like if you, I've been through the gamut. I've had to go to Colorado for my sister three different times in one summer. I ran up and down the road for my parents when I taught school and I was on the board. So I, I understand this whole problem and it's a big problem. So what happens if you have to take care of a sibling?
I'll have to double check on that with FMLA guidelines. Um, now there are some stipulations under FMLA in just how broad we want to make the policy. Um, there is, uh, I'm trying to think of, um, like Military Caregiver Act. Um, if you're a next of kin, there are some provisions in that that would apply. Um, so I'll have to check on that and get back to you on that one.
Vice Chair Bone?
So this has everything to do with you're out full-time for a certain period of time. Couple of years later, something else happens, it's restored, or how does that work?
Yeah, good question. This is every year.
Every year.
Every year that you would be entitled to this.
And, um, uh, you can't do this part-time, like somebody else can take care of your mother for the mornings, you can work in the mornings, so then you take over in the afternoons, that's not possible?
That's not the way it, it was drafted initially, um, as part of the paid parental leave, um, policy. And I think just by virtue of the nature of that was to give bonding time with a, a brand-new child in service role. Um, I don't think it was necessarily geared as much toward intermittent parts of leave. So.
But we could put that in there.
That is certainly something that the board can opt to do.
Okay, that's it for me.
Yeah, and, uh, I apologize, Clay. I, I think I missed what you said where that leave comes from, that 160 hours. Where does that?
It's four weeks. It, it equates to four weeks of FMLA and there has been traditionally bipartisan support in Washington for even moving to a paid FMLA, even for one's individual medical condition for up to six weeks. Um, but there's so much gridlock in Washington, we're not really seeing any movement of anything there.
Okay, so this is not like the state's program where if you take the leave, it comes out of your sick leave?
No, no.
So this is just above and beyond?
Yes, an additional.
Our employees get sick leave and annual leave?
Yes. Or unless they're a hybrid employee, then they get PTO time, which is combined. So.
Okay. Any other questions?
When, uh, when you think you will be back in front of us?
I can be back in front of you whenever you would want.
Tomorrow?
I was, I was gonna conclude with those comments. We hope to have this back on the agenda, the July, I believe it's the July 13th board meeting. We'll have a proposal for you to consider. We wanted to have a work session first to do what we just did and, and hear what remaining concerns, issues are out there. Uh, Clay's gonna update the draft, make sure Marty has taken a look at it to make sure we're not missing something, and we'll bring that back to you in July and get that checked off the list.
We'll give you till Thursday. Thank you, Clay.
I'll go back to my office and work the rest of the night, so.
We'll check to see if the lights on.
Yeah.
You all have any other questions, Corin?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So it sounds like we need to, uh, come up with some more suggestions on that? Any more discussion on it?
No, I'm good.
Uh, you know, I was thinking, when you, when you said grandma and grandpa, I think the biggest or the, the largest percentage of people utilizing this will be utilizing it for their parents because if an employee, but if an employee was like 20 years old, 24 years old, they probably do have a grandparent, but chances are they're gonna be taking care of their parents. But there probably will be a few that, that might need to, to take care of it. Their parents may not be in a position to take care of their grandparents. So I, I don't think it would be that many. So I don't think it would be that big of a, of a burden myself, but I know the state doesn't have that. Um, and I was very fortunate to be able to take advantage of that program for my mother, but, um, um, the state doesn't allow grandparents, I, I don't think. And I don't think they allow brothers and sisters either. It's the immediate family, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can add, one question that didn't come up, I don't think that I heard was, do we have an anticipated cost on this? And the answer to that question right now is no, but we didn't have an anticipated cost on the paid parental leave either. What we did is we set aside some funding in a reserve and we've been watching the usage of that to determine at what point we need to come back and ask that it be placed in the operating budget. We would do the same thing if the board adopts the elder, uh, I keep calling it elder care, the, uh.
Caregiver.
Caregiver policy. We would recommend that some additional funds be year-marked, one-time money put in there so that we can monitor the usage and then we can get a better feel for going forward, how much we would need to add into the budget each year.
Well, it's been, it's been going on for some years now.
Yeah, we've had five years. We had the parental leave.
At least 20 years probably, maybe 30?
Two of them before Mr. Moss.
Been about five.
Six years, five years.
Yeah, we've, we've had that money set aside and we've not had to come back to the board and ask that it be replenished yet, so it's.
The same original 5,000? Oh, 75,000.
75,000.
Got you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I couldn't hear that.
So we're.
Yeah, this sounds like something that's very doable, so. Any other discussion?
Would this also include grandparents that are raising their grandchildren? Would that be, if they have gar, they would be guardians? Yes?
I think that would, I'm. You're moving. Clay's been dealing with a bum knee. You moved pretty fast there, bud.
Yes, to answer your question, that in loco parentis or guardian at light home, um, if someone is appointed as, uh, the parent of the child, if it's grandparent, then yes, by all means.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately can draft it over and above that, again, just at the will of the board.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question because you're seeing more and more of that these days.
Right, grandparents raising the grandkids, yep.
Yeah. All right, you can sit back down. We'll call it back in a minute.
Thanks, sorry.
All right, if there, if there is no further discussion, uh, we have a motion to come out of work session.
Motion. Second.
All right. I don't know if, uh, the secretary got all those.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blavatsky?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spine?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair for the Council?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Okay, we are out of work session. New business, rezoning Oak Forest.
Mr. Chair, I'll just mention, as you go into new business, we have the rezoning and special use permit, uh, ordinance is on the agenda this evening, should the board wanna take action. When we've had public hearings in the past, sometimes the board has asked to be able to take action the same evening, uh, sometimes you've deferred action, so that's here at your pleasure.
Okay, well, in order to discuss that, we would need a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? It has been the, pretty much the standard here that if we do have somebody that speaks against something, that we usually wait to have a vote on it. Um, how, how do you all feel for tonight? We had one, one person, they came forward. Anybody in favor of putting this off until next meeting?
Well, the only thing I would say is if you don't put it off and then the situation comes again, and let's say you have two people that come, I mean, you sort of have to have it either one way or the other way, in my opinion, but that's just my.
Then I withdraw my motion. I agree with it. I mean, I agree with that, that's true.
I mean, we've always said, well, hey, nobody came and spoke against it, let's go ahead and pass it, you know? But we did have someone that came tonight, so.
So, um, what I'm hearing is, uh, maybe I can get some head nods or whatever, that we can just put this off until next meeting has been our, I won't say our policy, but has been our practice. Yeah. Okay, so you have withdrawn your motion?
Absolutely.
We have to have anything else done, Marty?
Yeah, we need a motion, second, and a vote to defer to the July.
I'll make a motion to defer it.
July 13th.
For the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to defer?
Second.
We have a second?
Either one.
Take your choice. Madam Secretary?
Okay. Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Kristicowski?
Aye.
Six ahs to defer.
Okay, that will be deferred as requested. We also have on new business advertised board's intent, propose ordinance to increase the courthouse security fees. We have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Just if you want the General Assembly increase, giving you guys authority to increase it from 10 to 20 effective July 1st. This will start the process, it'll be, if you guys determine to do, to increase, it'll be done on July 13th.
And I guess I'm not really clear on the, where does that money go? From the courthouse to us, or does it go to the sheriff's office, does it go to us and then we give it?
It goes to us and then we pay, we have to use it to pay for courthouse security personnel.
Which goes to the sheriff's budget.
Right, but it first comes to us.
So if it's an increase, does that affect their budget? I mean, are we not paying right now for all the courthouse security?
We are. It's just additional revenue from the state to help offset what we're already paying.
Okay.
Right.
I have a question. Can it ever be used for courthouse maintenance?
No. It says funding of courthouse security personnel.
Okay, what fees can be used for courthouse maintenance, do we know? I need to find that out because I think it's in one of the classes I've been taking, because I was thinking about the stairs.
That's gonna be county capital dollars, I'm afraid.
And it's the state who earmarks this thing.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have a courthouse maintenance fee? Courthouse maintenance fee that we could add to these things if you're convicted? Not that I'm aware of.
We could check, but you gotta have authority to do it, so.
I'll give you a thought for care.
I stand corrected.
The deputy county administrator says we do.
We do that one?
Collected by the court?
Okay.
Okay, so we do. It's obviously not much, because that was $2 or something, isn't it?
Maybe that's what I'm thinking. I know there's some.
I think it's $2 or $3.
All right, well, any more discussion on the courthouse security fees? If there is none, Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Kristicowski?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Which brings us to the most exciting part of our evening, reports. And we will start with our county attorney.
I will defer my report to another meeting.
You're so busy, you just don't have anything to report. I understand that.
Nothing to speak of.
All right, our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to mention to you that when we found out last week about the governor's announcement of last Friday is the Juneteenth holiday, which our employees, I heard several today, again, thanked the board for following the state schedule, which allowed for Friday to be a holiday. We also have another holiday that's been added this year, and I don't know that we've shared that with you. The governor, the General Assembly actually passed legislation making Election Day a state holiday. So Tuesday, November 3rd is a state holiday, which we have not previously had on the county's holiday schedule, because we follow the state holiday schedule, so.
And that's in lieu of Lee Jackson?
It is, it's in lieu of Lee Jackson Day. So next, in January 2021, we will not be taking Lee Jackson Day, because that one's gone from the calendar. But this year, employees had Lee Jackson Day in January, they had Juneteenth last Friday, and now they'll have Election Day on Tuesday, November 3rd. But wanted to make you aware of that. We're gonna be updating our calendar so that employees are aware of that as well, but that's, that's another change to the calendar. The only other thing I was gonna mention in my report tonight is, at our leadership team meeting last week, we had a very good conversation among the leadership group about the CARES Act funding that the county has received. And department heads and agencies talked about various needs that they see that those funds can be used for. We've formed a group that's gonna review all that information, and we're gonna come back to you guys in July with information on how we see those funds being applied for various needs throughout the county. You know, different counties are doing different things. We've, Marty and I have participated in a couple of conference calls and I'll just repeat what I've said earlier, my primary concern for the county is that we don't run out and spend money that we later find out that we're on the hook for. It has to be spent by December 30th, and we understand the time is of the essence, but at the same time, we're gonna move forward cautiously and make sure we're doing the right thing with the funding. So we'll be talking more about that in July as well. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right, and we'll go ahead and start with the board, and top on my list is Supervisor Demas, but she is not with us tonight, so we will move on to Supervisor Shepard.
I have no report this evening.
Okay, no report. Supervisor Blevins?
No report.
Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but I do have a question. I've been trying to figure this out. I'm not against, I'm not for. Why is, why did he give Election Day off? I mean, I understand government employees can take off to vote, hopefully they will vote, but that's not helping the private sector any.
I don't know.
Has anybody heard anything about that?
I know at one point in time, there was a concern about schools, because a lot of schools are polling locations and, but I don't know that a state holiday even creates a situation where the schools take off that day, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. We'll try to look back and see what the General Assembly's, because the General Assembly actually passed that as part of the bill, so try to find that out.
I know they said it'd make it easier for people to get out and vote, but the majority of people are still working. This is something that this board can look at and make our own calendar, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone that the VACO regional meeting is this Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And are any of y'all planning to zoom in or?
Yeah.
Good. One of the things, we're gonna have Evan Feinman is the governor's chief broadband advisor, he's gonna be the guest speaker. So I think that's, you know, that's probably good for us. And then they wanted to have, I think, one person to talk about each county's legislative needs, and we had talked about broadband, but are you gonna be on it, Steve?
What date was that again?
It's Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m.
I think I got like two conflicts with it, but if I can, if I can move my schedule, then yeah, because I wanted to be on it.
Yeah, if you're on it, would you like to, you know, bring up the broadband thing or?
Sure. But if I'm not on it, I hope somebody else takes it.
Yeah, I can, I can do it or share it, yeah. We'll, we'll make sure it gets out there.
Is there a deadline for that sign up? I remember reading it.
I don't think so. I haven't, they have to send our information, how to get into it too.
I don't think they've done that yet. I don't think.
Okay, and that's the only thing I have, because I just wanted to make sure that we had some representation.
Absolutely.
And I plan to be on it.
Very important. Vice Chair Bone?
I have a draft resolution that I'd like to read. I sent it to you all right before this meeting to see if you're interested in it. Appreciation of a county employee response to COVID-19. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the county administrator, the county's leadership team, and all county employees for their commendable response to COVID-19. Whereas Commonwealth of Virginia Executive Order 51 dated March 12, 2020 declared a state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Virginia in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Montgomery County facilities closed to the public on March 20, 2020. And whereas in response to the closure of the Montgomery County facilities to the public on March 20, county employees quickly and adequately instituted remote work and communications capabilities to ensure that primary services for citizens and employees continued. And whereas the Montgomery County facilities reopened to the public on June 15, 2020 with the necessary COVID-19 prevention and precautionary measures in place for both citizens and employees. And whereas Montgomery County employees continuously adapted and found ways to accommodate citizens and employees, overcoming challenges and remaining accessible in order to properly respond to public need for said primary and necessary services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors does herewith offer its sincere appreciation for the excellent COVID-19 response shown through county leadership and employees remaining steadfast, helpful, and industrious, all while accepting the challenges faced with a strong sense of integrity and resilience, as well as a noteworthy work ethic and unparalleled professionalism on behalf of the citizens of Montgomery County, Virginia.
I like it.
Are you making that motion?
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on that. Is there any discussion?
Excellent.
Got it, excellent? Okay.
Extra good.
Extra good.
Wow.
Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Kristicowski?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Where are we gonna put it?
We'll know that it's there.
Is there a way to get that out to the folks?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure we'll have something out on that first thing in the morning to our employees, and we'll also post it as well. Thank y'all so much for that. Appreciate the support. It has been, I've used the word unprecedented and challenging way too much, but it's been an interesting couple of months, but thank you for that.
That's it.
Thank you. Yes, how we've managed to get through this pandemic and all the other things that are happening in society, it's, we are very fortunate to have an administration that stays on top of things. And, and I really do appreciate someone who could see into the future and protect us sometimes from ourselves, because I think we were getting ready to build a whole lot of things and do a lot of things, but we really need to wait until it's prudent to do so, that's for sure. Only other thing I wanted to add, I wanted to thank Mary for her part in that local government recovery task force. I like what I saw come out of that, and I just hope that, that the governor and his staff pay extra attention to that, because it's not really a wish list, it's a needs list. And we, we just don't need to be stepped on anymore.
Yeah, the immediate needs, like we got.
Absolutely. All right, well, with all those things said, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jen, and the team, I'm sure. My job, easy.